Is David not gonna be here?
He's sick.
Oh, he's sick? I'm glad he's not here then, especially if he sent him aside.
Is this Tyler? Tyler with him?
I guess, yeah.
You guys read? Good afternoon. I'm calling the January 2nd, 2024, meeting of the Amherst County Board of Supervisors to order. The time is 3:00 PM. First thing is the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would join me for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Adams. Our Father and our God, Lord, we come to you today humbly as your servants. Father, we thank you for getting us through this past year. And Father, we ask that you fulfill 2024 with just great possibilities and vision for 2024 for the county, Lord. Father, we lift up all of our employees to you. We lift those who have lost loved ones, Father, and just ask you to place a special, your presence on them, Father, and bless them and comfort them. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us, and it's in your son's name we ask and pray. Amen.
Right, Brian, please direct your attention to the flag. The Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to our county administrator, Mr. Bryant, for election of officers.
Okay, thank you, sir. Every year in January, we go through our process to elect officers on the Board of Supervisors. We start out with the chairman of the board. I'm gonna open the floor up to accept nominations for chairman of the board.
Point, nominate Mr. Wade.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I would ask you to rearrange your seats and move the chairman to his rightful position. Now it's back to you.
All righty, thank you.
Vice chair.
Thank you all for the nomination. Now we need to elect the vice chair. So with that, I'll nominate Ms. Tucker. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? All right, hearing none. Congratulations, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you, Gordon.
Moving on, our next item is the appointment of the liaisons to the various committees. There's a look at the proposed appointees in your docket there. Any discussion there? All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we appoint the liaison members as shown in the board agenda.
There's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none. You have your next set of appointees there. All right, next item on the agenda is the meeting schedule. Currently, we're scheduled to meet the first and third Tuesdays of each month. 3 o'clock for the first Tuesday, 7 o'clock for the second Tuesday. Any discussion there? Any changes? All right, is there a motion on the floor to maintain the current meeting schedule?
I move that the board continues meeting schedule as currently configured.
Hearing a motion by Mr. Martin, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, Mr. Martin. So that's approved, so we're gonna continue meeting same time. The next item on the docket is the rules of procedure. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the 2024 rules of procedure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board adopt the rules and procedures of 2024 as proposed and amended.
All right, thank you, Mr. Adams. There's a motion on the floor to adopt the 2024 rules of procedure. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, you have that. The rules of procedure have been adopted. The next item on the docket is the approval of today's agenda. With that, I would like to remove item 7C, the special meeting. We still need to figure out a time for that, so we'll go ahead and remove that for the time being. And then I'd also like to delete item number 11, liaison and committee reports, as Mr. Pew is not available for today's meeting. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda?
So moved as amended.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay? All right, thank you. So today's agenda is approved. Next item is citizen comment. We didn't have anybody sign up, but if there's anybody that would like to address the board, please step forward now. And just state your name and what district you're in.
My name is Norm Walton. I'm with Perkins and Orson. I represent San Patel with the Madison Heights Development Project. And I'm speaking in regards to the ordinance change that's proposed, that you will hear shortly, the first read. I wanted to express our gratitude to staff. We had a first read of this previously. We've gone back, had some revisions, worked with staff to what we believe is a good, albeit not perfect, but a good solution to protect the county's interest, as well as gives the developer the flexibility that he requested. So we'd like to thank staff for their work, and we believe this is a good, amenable solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Next item up is the ordinance first read for ordinance 2023-11, the multifamily dwellings. Mr. Creasy.
Chairman, board, good to see you all and happy new year. At our previous meeting in December, I brought to you a first read in regard to an ordinance that would allow multifamily dwellings in the residential sub areas of the mixed-use traditional neighborhood development to exceed the 15-foot setback through a special exception. After receiving feedback from the board and after speaking with the developer, staff has worked to come up with a different code change. So I would like for you to kind of take that out of your memory bank and not even think about a special exception anymore. And what staff has worked on with the applicant is to propose the idea of access roads in the mixed-use traditional neighborhood development. Now, it's important to note, lots will still have to front on a public road. This does not mean that lots would be able to front on a private access road. They would still have to front on a public road. However, the multifamily buildings themselves would be allowed to be able to set back off of an access road instead of the front property line or public right-of-way. So with that being said, I'd like to take a little bit more time to go through this first read than I typically do. And I'd first like to go over the definition of an access road with you all. And we have written a private right-of-way built to state standards that is parallel to a public right-of-way and provides either primary or secondary access for vehicles to multifamily dwellings. Access roads shall provide at least two, access roads shall provide access to at least two principal structures, will be located on the same lots to which the road provides access, and will be maintained by a property owners association. All access roads shall be paved or surface traded to eliminate dust. A couple of other things to add on to these access roads that we have built in additional standards. For example, all multifamily dwellings that front along an access drive shall provide pedestrian connectivity from the principal structure to the public right-of-way, meaning if they're set back further off, they've got to provide a sidewalk, sidewalk or some means for those pedestrians to get to the public road, and then that also, there will be sidewalks along that public road. No off-street parking shall be permitted between a public right-of-way and an access drive. So with that, we hope that the intent of the ordinance is still met. I mean, if you've got this public road and you've got the access drive set back around 50 feet off, we're not allowing parking in between that access road and the public right-of-way. So we're, we want landscaping there, things of that nature. So the intent of the ordinance is still met. We're not having the parking in the front. It's still gotta be on the side or behind the buildings. Another point in regards to parking, and this will be a minor administrative change. I have access drives that should say roads. I apologize for that. That will be a simple change we can make, but access roads shall not be permitted to have on-street parking, meaningly you can't have parking along the access roads. So it's going back to the parking still behind the buildings. And then the last thing is built into the setbacks, which I already went over, is that lots still have to front on a public road. You still have to meet your minimum lot frontage requirements along a public road, but the buildings themselves through this code change would be allowed to be set back off of the access drive instead of that public right-of-way. There is a recommended motion in there, however, I do understand that this is brand-new to you all. So if there are changes needed, staff understands that. And with that, are there any questions?
Okay, so I wasn't with you, then I was with you, and now I'm not with you again.
Okay.
Okay, so my understanding is, the way you describe this, is that if you had the public road and then a 50-foot strip, then you had your private access drive, you could not put parking between the two.
Correct.
Could you put parking between the private access road and the building frontage?
No.
Okay, good.
And then let me reiterate, because you might want to explain more. The reason I don't have it written specifically for that is because they still have to meet a 15-foot front yard setback off of that access road, and a parking spot's 9 by 18. It's not written into it, but based off of the setback they would have to meet, they would not be allowed to put any parking in between that access road and the building.
Is it a 15-foot maximum setback?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it couldn't fit. I guess what it gets me to is, is okay, they're going in, they're essentially building a private road. Right. Why would we want to prohibit on-street parking on their private road?
To meet the intent of the ordinance of to where the parking is on the backside of the building? Because these, these access roads could be long. They could be from anywhere from 500 to 1,200 linear feet, and that could be a good amount of cars parked along that road.
Sure it could, but I mean, I think, at least from an urban design perspective, which is kind of what we were going for,
Mm-hmm.
want to be able to have parallel parking along the fronts of the buildings.
And I believe we could easily make that change.
To me, I don't see prohibiting the parallel parking along the private drive if they want to do so.
Understood.
That's just my recommendation.
I've got a follow-up question to that, Mr. Martin. So was, was, what about people that would try to use it as parking, but they weren't associated with that development? Is that gonna be a problem, or is it just not relevant?
I'm not sure that, I'm sorry. I'm not sure it's really relevant. I think really it's gonna be used the most by the people that live in the buildings. And again, it's not a requirement that they do it. It's just that if they decided to do, I don't think we should prohibit it. If they wanted to put parallel parking along the front of the access drives, we shouldn't prohibit it. So I'm not saying make them do it. I'm just saying that if they want to do it, they should be able to. Mr. Walton, do you have any thoughts on that?
Sure. Kind of addressing all of those points at the same time. The core area provides and actually encourages on-street parking. So the main corridor through the development would have parallel parking along the sides. I think we would want to restrict it to parallel parking, not any kind of angled or pull-in parking. And I think, as Tyler mentioned, the maximum setback of 15 feet is gonna prohibit that. This is specifically for multi-housing dwellings, so to your point, I think it would be restricted to more people there. It's not a mixed-use area like the core area could be, to where there's commercial mixed in with apartments. I think this is gonna be primarily the apartments, and so either people that reside there or visitors would live there or would use these parallel parking spaces. I don't think parallel parking spaces is gonna be a negative attribute to this. I think that would work fine. We would welcome it.
Thank you.
Mr. Adams, any questions?
Yeah, but I'm trying to figure out how to word this, because I'm thinking, Tyler, is this, this, this proposed change came about primarily because of the Town Center project, correct?
Correct. This is a, this came from, the petition is from the developer for this change, yes, sir.
And I'm assuming, again, I'm coming in and trying to catch up, to catch up to speed here, so. And when you guys do this, we're incorporating public safety as far as feedback and making sure means of ingress and egress.
During the site, site development, yes, sir, not specifically during the code change. For example, due to the access drives, we would make sure that the entrances, like during site development, that fire trucks could meet the turning radius and stuff, but that's not something we would specifically build into the zoning part of this ordinance.
Okay. And I guess the follow-up question to that is, if this was put into place or proposed, this proposed change is because of this development, we don't have, we're not, it's not gonna present a problem for us, any reciprocal problems for us down the road?
Staff has worked through it, and that is something that we take into account when drawing up these code changes, is if we make this code change, is this gonna cause issues for us later on? We don't believe that is the case for this. We've tried, I've tried to work out, staff has worked out, hopefully, many possibilities of this. We've worked with Mr. Walton and also Josh Marsh, who did the master plan, and we don't really foresee any, any issues with this code change if it moves forward.
No further, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, so you need a motion from us?
For advertisement, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board directs staff to advertise ordinance 2023-11 for a public hearing on January 16th, 2024.
Is that without the prohibition of on-street private drives? I had, I had talked to them. The way it's worded now is on-street parking is prohibited on the private drives. I had requested that they take it out. So is your motion including taking that out or not?
I had not contemplated that. Do you want it? What was?
Well, that was my.
We had an agreement. Do we have an agreement on that?
I thought we had consensus, but I was just clarifying.
I will amend my motion to include the language from Mr. Martin.
Understood.
Thank you, Tyler.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Creasy. All right, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker for ordinance 2023-11, as amended by Mr. Martin and Ms. Tucker. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, that approves. We'll advertise that for public hearing on January 16th. Is that correct? All right. Next thing we have is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended earlier?
So moved.
Motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, consent agenda is approved. Next item we have, it's new business. I'll turn it over to Mr. Bryant.
Thank you. Let's see, we have a request for the sheriff's office for additional positions. The board, let's see, let me flip over to this. Mr. Ayers is with us today for his request. Mr. Ayers, I'll turn it over to you to pose your request to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Good afternoon, board. Mr. Wade, congratulations on your new position. Mr. Adams, glad to see you there, representing District 3. What I'm here before you all today is, in trying to reorganize and organize, we determined, or Ms. Mays let us know, that we had two administrative positions that were taking the two law enforcement positions, in other words, two members of office staff, that's IT director and the accreditation manager, were in two law enforcement positions. Obviously, those two individuals are not sworn law enforcement. So what I'd ask is, I need those law enforcement positions to go back in the field as servants to the community in that aspect. So I had met with Mrs. McBride and discussed the salaries and how all of this would work, and she's worked on that side of it, but that's how this actually is. I'm just trying to realign the positions and put them where they need to be. And obviously, these two staff positions, I need those accreditation. Someone has to keep up with that. And IT with the in-call cameras and the body cameras and all the IT equipment that is utilized now for law enforcement, I need the staff to manage and take care of that as well. So that is what I'm here before you all today, is to ask to be able to push these law enforcement positions back into the service areas they need to be in. Any questions?
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'd like to clarify. So really, so what, I think, to clarify the request, and it's in your packet, but there's vacancy savings now that if you choose to approve it, is enough to carry and cover the positions from now to the end of this fiscal year. But what we're also then asking is, if you approve it, of course, we would need, these would be positions added. So you would also be directing me to try to figure out how to add that into this, you know, this upcoming '24, '25 budget. So I just wanted to be clear that that's what I would do. That's the instructions I would take from you, is that we're covered with vacancy savings till the end of the year. Stacy, did I say anything wrong? Okay.
All right, one quick question I have. What is the financial estimate for the two positions?
About $130,000 for both positions, and that includes, that's salaries and benefits, and includes everything.
Board, any other questions for?
No, that was my question.
Sheriff.
Thank you all.
Or what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that the board approve the addition of two positions for the sheriff's office of an accreditation clerk and an information technology position.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Ms. Tucker. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Congratulations, sir. All right, next item is the county administrators' report.
Just wanted to update you, there are, you're receiving your quarterly update from January 1 through March 31 of boards, commission committees that have vacancies. So EDA has a vacancy coming up, BZA, so no motions needed from you today. Just want you to help us get the word out. We will do our part to recruit, advertise, but just letting you know that these positions are coming up.
Thank you, sir.
Have these, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, have these current members expressed interest in staying? Jeremy, do we know?
The EDA member, the EDA member has.
Okay.
Additional questions for Mr. Bryant? All right, thank you, sir. All right, moving on to the county attorney's report, Mr. Popovich.
I have nothing at this time.
Sir. All right, next on the docket, we're back to citizen comment. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? All right, seeing none, moving on to matters from members of the Board of Supervisors. Mr. Adams.
I have none.
Mr. Martin? Ms. Tucker?
I don't have anything.
And I have nothing as well. So with that, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
... greater converse to our supplemental plan, which is less and has positions. So this is generally one-time cost. What we've provided you thus far is the items within your Excel spreadsheet, tabs that explain what those items are. But understandably so, even when you read them, you may not understand exactly what those items are and the necessity of those items. Therefore, we have the different department heads and directors here. So if you have any questions for myself, our staff, Stacy, in terms of what these items are, I want to reiterate that what we're asking you to do is to prioritize these in the best order that you foresee. Again, we've given you staff's recommendation on what staff. And I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that process. So when we do that, we rank them, kind of like you did. And then we go into a meeting, kind of like this, where we sit around and we discuss, debate, and move things around based on need. Because we feel like we get more information and gain more knowledge by having a conversation with people. So that's what gave you the staff score, hoping that helped you out in making decisions on what you feel like is important. Certainly, there's things on here that we have to do. By law, we have to do the reassessment. We do that every six years in Amherst. So there's certain things by law that we have to do, and certainly, certain things that we do not have to do. And as I see it, generally, the priorities shook out that way. And I think you guys did a good job on initially ranking them. I would just want to reiterate that what we're asking you today is to give us your best priority. This does not lock you into that. You can still change it later. This will come back to you as the budget process matures. I will also point out that this does not lock you into funding any of these projects. We're trying to get your priorities right now. That will help staff out in the budgeting process, making recommendations to you as this process goes forward. Okay? Ms. McBride, is there anything you would like to add at this point?
I would say that if there's something that you do not want to fund this year, it would be helpful in the budget process to go ahead and tell us where you want, if you want to move it out or if you want it removed. With CIP, it's kind of, you're spending your savings. So it's what you have the stomach for at the end of the day. So you can kind of get a good idea of what you want to do for the year, but you can always change your mind between now and May, when we adopted. So, or late April. So I'm just giving you that option. Like, it will help to go ahead and move it out if it's something you really don't want to do or just don't want to pay for all of them in the same year.
So, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, historically, what we do is turn it over to Ms. McBride so she can pace us through this?
Yeah, with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. So for Mr. Adams' sake, this is, the way we normally proceed is that we go through like a small group and decide if we have them in the right place. If you have questions, please let me know. We'll have, if I can't answer them, we'll have the staff member come up and answer questions. Let's start with the first three. We have the reassessment. We do need to get that started this year. We have the EMS pharmacy, which we do need to get started this year. And we have the landfill leachate pump in that order. I will tell you that I am going to have our grants person look for a grant for that pump possibly, because I do believe there are some out there for landfill equipment. Now, whether we get it or not, I don't know. But I do think we can at least apply for one. So with that, is the Board okay with the top three and for them being funded in the coming up budget year?
I've got one quick question.
Sure.
So we know the reassessment is a must-have. We know the pharmacy is a must-have. What are the other must-haves on this list that we need to take into account now?
I would say probably the other one that's a must-have is that Commonwealth Attorney Case Management.
Okay.
He's got to be able to redact the video. And this was actually the cheaper way of going than, going with a whole new software was cheaper than adding on to his old software. I have all that information in my office. It's like a book. So I did not put it in the CIP workbook itself, if you'd like to see it.
No, I've personally seen the current software they're working with. It's pretty sad. So I will agree with that one.
Well, it has to do with being able to meet discovery laws, is what he told, explained to me.
That too, yes.
And having to redact stuff.
Got a question, though. But I think it's a matter of definition of must-have versus mandates. Okay, are there mandates on here that we have to do?
Okay, the mandates would be the first two.
So the EMS pharmacy is a mandate. Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, right? You're going to have to do it by December of 2024, right? Yes, please.
No, that's good enough, okay. So EMS pharmacy is a mandate. This leachate pump, is that a mandate?
Jeremy.
You got to come on.
Jeremy, come to the mic.
You got to be heard.
Not a mandate, but we would have to have this.
Especially, this is way deep up here. Because I can't get you to on the video.
In order for us to pump the leachate out, we would have to have that. Our pump's getting pretty old.
But you, there's no, so you have a pump now, and I'm not picking on the landfill at all.
Right.
But you have a pump now, it's getting to the end of life. You need another pump. Right. But there's no state agency out there telling you, you've got to update your pump. Okay, good. So how about the Thrasher's Dam slope repairs? Anybody telling us we have to repair that?
DEQ has, tell us.
So that's a mandate.
Well, I hadn't gotten that from you.
Okay. But he asked you what was the mandates versus must-haves. So I think the way to do is to go down the list and to define what the mandates are, because then that becomes your first pump priority, right?
Yes. Now, my understanding is while DEQ has told them that Thrasher's needs to be repaired, it's not necessarily immediate. It's going to get worse.
But what about, what about that conversation that happened with the legislature two years ago about private, well, private and publicly owned dams? That there were certain standards that they would have to meet. So are we not meeting those standards? Are we in, close to being in violation?
I don't have those answers. I can get Mr. Thacker or, Jeremy, you don't have those answers, do you? When it comes to state code?
Had our reports done from DEQ or from Hurt and Profit this year, and it was a strong recommendation that we get them fixed. It hasn't gotten out of compliance yet, but it's fastly becoming out of compliance.
Jeremy, what's the issue with Thrasher's? What's?
Where the slope is and the water line meets, we need to put some more dirt back in so it won't eat away so much.
What about the trees? Do we have a problem with that? Because that was, made us out of violation.
Yeah, we are working on them now. Getting everything cut out.
Did that contribute to this problem?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
So really, the only two mandates we have so far is reassessment and the EMS pharmacy?
Yes.
Because you could argue everything is strongly needed. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, and knowing, getting that clarified, are one through three the same as where you want them to still be?
I'm good.
Always subject to change, but.
Yeah, I'm good with where they're staying currently. But I'll let Mr. Adams, Mr. Martin weigh in as well.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, so the next three are CPR device replacements for our Public Safety Department, the Commonwealth Attorney Case Management, which we briefly discussed, and the Thrasher Dam slope repair, which we briefly discussed. Are these still good in this order, at this level of priority for you all?
I don't want to keep picking everything. I'm not picking because I believe this. For the CPR devices, are they on a manufacturer's suggested replacement schedule? Or how does, how do we?
I think they're out of warranty.
How's that work?
I think they're out of warranty.
Yes, ma'am, most of these products are end of life. We're currently using some that are 10, 11 years old. Some are even maybe a little bit older than that. So it's, one, we're having trouble finding parts. Two, if we're getting them repaired, it's like $6,000 to repair one, and they won't even recertify them any longer. So they've kind of come to their end of life. And there's newer products out there. And we use these quite a bit. I think we used them four times over the weekend. So they're definitely getting quite a bit of use.
Are we replacing all of them or just?
Yes, ma'am. So something we started last year was trying to come up with a five- or 10-year replacement plan. We had not done a great job historically of putting things in to replace them categorically. We started last year. We did CPR devices this year. We've got cardiac monitors next year. And so we'll continue to do that with some of our equipment so that we're keeping the same. The problem becomes if we use two different brands, depending on what truck you're on for the day, you may be confused. So we like to do it all at a wholesale change at one time so everybody's using the same technology.
To me, thank you.
Thank you.
Which is, Mr. Chair, is why I hesitated on the top three? Because if we were ranking things, I would obviously, not that the landfill leachate pump is not important, I would obviously rank the CPR devices above the leachate, the other two being mandated. But I would have ranked it that higher. But I think in the end, it's really not going to.
I think also to expand on that, obviously, this touches me a little bit closer than a lot of the other stuff. This is also a safety issue for our staff as well. Obviously, when our folks respond to a cardiac arrest, I think Mr. Beam will agree with me, we're typically not responding with three people a lot of times on a cardiac arrest. If we can implement these devices, that removes one person, right? Increases the efficiencies of CPR, much similar to what the heart normally does, like all of us sitting right here. So I'm with Mr. Martin on this. If I've got to make some changes, I'm going to bump that one up the list. But like I said, in the end, if it doesn't make any difference, then we can all agree on that.
I'd say with that, I mean, for the sake of this, I'd say go ahead and swap three and four. That way, it's higher in priority, if it comes down to priority later on. So.
Mr. Beam, on that 188, do we think that that's going to be a solid number? Or is it going to be, is that going to be liquid to, with some trade-ins of the old devices?
That's a great point, Mr. Adams. This is wholesale. If we had to buy them at street value for all of them, we have the older devices that we talked about. Typical, they'll take them in on trade-in. A lot of times, we'll get $3,000 to $6,000. Just depends on where the market is now. But we did budget for full replacement with hopefully being able to bring that project in under budget.
This is the absolutely worst-case scenario.
Yes, sir.
At this number.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is it consensus of the Board to move those, flip those two?
I'm good with that. Mr. Martin, Mr. Adams, Ms. Tucker?
All right, so the next ones are, and I need to apologize, I can't remember what 31 is. We have the courthouse HVAC, and it's split up into two years because of the size of the project. And then we have the library stairs, and we have courthouse repairs. And that's like the roof painting. I can get our purchasing manager to come up here and fill you in on all that again. Those are the next three. Are you all good with those being seven, eight, and nine?
Where's the circuit court at? Is that in the future year?
The circuit court renovations? Right here.
So what's the difference between the need in the circuit court and the courthouse repairs?
So the courthouse repairs are more your structural exterior. The circuit court is a request from the judge to have an update to the interior courtroom.
But the judge has actually asked for the?
Yes, it came from his, with his name on it, straight to me.
And he could?
Yes, he could. He could make us do it without, you know, he could require the county to do that.
Are the details in the tab on that?
Yes, they should be.
In the ground.
And the renovations, that was the carpet and the pads for the benches and stuff, right?
The renovations, yes.
Yeah.
The courthouse repairs are your roof, the flat roof, I think. Melissa, is that right? Ms. Woodard took care of this project, estimating it for us.
The courthouse repairs are replacing the flat roof on the old courthouse section, repairing and replacing the slate roof that's on top of that, and then painting and replacing the walkway, the brick walkway on the left side of the building.
Repairing the slate roof?
Yes, repairing and replacing if they're damaged to that point.
I guess my thought, Board, is if you're going to do the court buildings, you might as well do them all at once, especially if the judge has asked for that. We probably should take a little bit more serious look at it.
Yeah, I had put the courthouse ahead of the library stairs.
I'm not scared. He's not going to tell me personally to pay for it.
He'll let us know.
So in the courthouse HVAC, going back to that, I see that drawn, like you said, over two fiscal years. But I only see unless I overend, which I could have. I'm just trying to get that. But I only see unless I overend, which I could have, I'm just trying to get acclimated to these tabs down here. Is Southern Air is the only one that's given us any idea as far as pricing goes on that project?
That is a maintenance question. Nate? Yes. At this time, yes. We just use it to estimate the project. I have to, I have to toot our staff's horns in that we don't usually come in over budget. And they don't get the extra money, we just put that back in our general fund.
I mean, I...
So do you wanna group all three together? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm thinking, to me, it's just me, that the priority should go, to me, if the judge requested it, it's almost like a mandate.
Oh, I don't disagree, but it was, it's not a state code.
I'm just, I'm just trying to describe to you guys where my, my thinking is. And then, but then, like the other building stuff, like the library stairs, they look like they're ready to slide off in Main Street, okay? To me, that would take a higher priority than remodeling the county administration building, just because we think it'd be nice to remodel it, right?
If you, if you, if you lump all three of them together, you're at, what, $400,000, 360, something like that?
For the current year? Uh, yes, I believe it's 250, about, about 5. No, sorry. Courthouse HVAC, are you talking about the HVAC and the repairs and the renovation?
Yeah.
Huh?
Yes.
All three together?
No, that's about 570, 570, $570,000.
Yeah. Because it's 233, 250, and, and round up to 83.
I'm assuming a project the size of the HVAC that'll go in for an RFP anyway, correct?
Yes.
Well, yeah, true.
So again, would you like to group those three together? Not, not in one line item, but in the same area of the list?
I mean, I would, and, and to me, if, if the judge asks for the renovations, it would rank higher than the others, court stuff. But it would make sense to me to do them all at once and just get the courts done.
Okay, there we go.
That's just me.
I don't disagree. I mean, I think, I think you're right, I think he could ask for everything that's on that list, actually, if he really wanted to.
We're not done yet, I mean, we're just... You're not telling us what our cutoff line's gonna be?
Whatever you leave on this list is what I plan for you to fund. I just think that personally, knowing the board, that the number at the bottom is a little large for you all. But you may just have to do it this year.
But I think that's a pretty bold statement too, though. If you leave it on a list, that's what you expect to fund.
Well, that's what...
Until we can see what the budget's gonna come in at...
This isn't funded out of the operating budget.
And I understand that.
This is funded out of your savings, and you have about 10 million right now in there.
And, well...
And we're, we're gonna come back to you to get, we'll go through cut lines and all that later.
Right, but normally, I don't, don't necessarily give you a cut line on the CIP. It's what you all wanna fund, and, and we, we go forward.
I mean, everything on that, in this list is about 4.5 million, right?
Actually, no, it's 3.3. Because part of it's grant-funded, if we leave it in there.
I see.
Okay?
So which grant-funded, Ms. McBride?
The Sarah Lou Christian Trail Expansion.
I didn't, I was gonna ask about that because I didn't see a note on the tab on it, unless, again, unless I overlooked it. I was gonna ask about that.
But do we even have the right of way for them?
We have, we have the right of way through CBTC. So we have all that, so we can go about another roughly .8, .9 miles on CBTC. We have all of that easement, it's 100 foot wide from the river, and it goes the length of the property. What's stopping us is the one piece of private property to make that connection.
Obviously, it's pretty, it's ranked at the bottom, but, I mean, entertaining. What's the, what's the matching portion from accounting for that grant?
About 250. What our match would be?
Yes.
The reason we went ahead and put, barring that we wanna keep extending it. If we don't do the grant this year, what we've learned is it'll be two more years before we can apply for construction. It's every other year now for DC, or for construction, and the in-between years are for maintenance.
Counter portion, 250,000.
Roughly, yeah.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, these work sessions are typically less formal, right? So we're just...
They're informal. They're very informal.
I know how they roll.
Well, I had two things. One, I see the logic, what Mr. Martin says about the courthouse, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
It was just kinda brushing up, brushing up against something that I feel strongly about. But we have been committed to that trail for years.
Yes, ma'am.
And I would hate to see us waiving that commitment. Community loves it, people come from Lynchburg over there, so that's all I wanna say about that.
May I say something? We have, we will continue to try to search for grant funds, so I would say this, even, even if we apply, we'll bring that to you and say, we've, we've applied. If we're successful, we'll come back and say, this is how much they, they will give us.
You can still turn it down.
Right, that's, or approve it.
Or approve it.
Even if this is at the bottom of the list, you could still approve it. We're still gonna pursue it, no matter what, we'll pursue it and bring it to you if we get...
Even if you push it out two years, we'll go ahead and apply for the grant just to see if we can qualify.
Because that million-dollar grant now, is that in hand?
No, we don't have it in hand.
We haven't applied for it yet.
We're budgeting for it, we're just, this is just a budget for it.
That's just, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just wanna let you know that there is a match for that one, and, and we wanna, we're gonna apply for it. The current year was for maintenance, so we didn't apply.
Don't get the grant, you don't spend the 250.
Then it just goes away to the two years out. All right, so the next three are your dispatch remodel, the brush...
Who decided?
Oh, I don't know. I thought we...
We moved it, but we don't know.
We moved, I moved it.
Put the three together or not?
Yeah, they're up there.
They're up there.
Okay.
Line 11, 12, and 13.
Unless you don't want to.
I'm good.
Okay, so the next three are your dispatch remodel, your brush truck for Pedler, and your Monroe window replacement.
Dispatch remodel, Mr. Chief Bean.
Should've just set you up here.
Good afternoon again.
Tell us about the need for the dispatch remodel.
Yeah, so we have four consoles in our dispatch center, four seating positions where dispatcher can sit, dispatch, answer radio, key things, and so on and so forth. We're lucky that a lot of times, we now have four dispatchers working. And because of growth in the county and increased call volume for EMS and law enforcement, all four dispatchers stay busy. We've had occasion where events have happened, we had several trees go down, as you remember, back in the summertime, brought extra people in, and so we were out of consoles. Also, our dispatch supervisor can pop in there and do some of the, can help out if need be. So the remodel would be to take out the wall, for those who've been in dispatch, would be to take out the wall between dispatch and the little hallway, and be able to put two more consoles in there. This, what we put in here for funding this year would cover taking the wall out, the electrical upgrade, would also include the IT components that Jackie and her team have built out to put the computers in. And then we've gotten the radio service board to commit capital funds to put the radios in, which is actually one of the bigger costs, it's about 70 grand for the radio system for those two seating positions. And they've agreed in the capital budget for next year to, to pay for that if we do this part.
It would allow you to add two more dispatchers?
Two more dispatch seating positions, yes, sir.
That you don't have funded.
No, 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 not adding, right, so right now, we typically have four. But in an emergency, this would give us seating positions to put more people in. On a busy day like today, there are four dispatchers in there, but Brooke, our communications manager, could pop out and sit at the fifth console, if you would.
You're not asking for two of them?
No, sir, not asking for two, just asking for the infrastructure to, to be able to accommodate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are you good with those three where they are?
What, dispatch, brush truck?
Brush truck and Monroe window replacement.
I wouldn't put the Monroe window replacement in front of any fire apparatus, personally. I wouldn't put the window replacement in front of a fire apparatus.
Yeah, I agree with that, that's how I had it on my sheet.
But...
I would suggest maybe hear from maintenance on that one because my understanding is it's causing the building to deteriorate quickly.
Those windows were replaced, when?
That is a question for maintenance.
Hold on.
Back to me. Hello? To the direct question? It needs to be done.
The pressing need to replace those windows?
The, we're at the point now where the windows are allowing the environment, the outside environment into the building. We no longer have a weather-tight seal.
But weren't they repla, I thought they were replaced since I've been on the board. When were they replaced?
Windows are... I would say they're probably in excess of 20 years old.
I'm with you, Claudia, that's what I was, I, I thought when that thing transitioned from the alternative school to this, I, I could've swore that those things have been replaced as well. I'm like, I might question you as well, but...
Well, be that as it may, I mean, I wouldn't put it in front of any fire apparatus. And I'm just gonna go ahead and throw this out here, the, where did the new public safety station fall out?
On I M 20.
To me, that needs to be pushed way up. We need to start looking at it right now, should've already looked at it. Because essentially, we've got the people, correct me if I'm wrong, we've got the people that run the majority of the calls in the county, right? That essentially don't have a home right now. Am I wrong?
No, that's, that's a correct statement.
So we should definitely start planning for it. So to me, that should, that might even push way up above everything else.
What do, what do we get for that $45,000?
I think that's just a preliminary agency.
Brad, you may as well stay up here.
I know. Yeah.
I told him he just need to take a seat.
Great day, get to talk to the board, it's great. Um, so that $45,000 is kind of a placeholder. Basically, what that is to do is to do preliminary looking at needs assessment for the building to potentially work with an architecture firm to say, hey, here's what we need to put in the building. What is your recommendation for sizing, spacing, that sort of thing? And then also, if we need to work with someone like Hurt and Profit or someone for a particular piece of property that we find, to say, would this piece of property work for us to do it? So it's really just do some kind of preliminary work is what that $45,000 was. Again, just a placeholder. And then the remaining budget is just based on what we're seeing across the market for, for cost right now.
So if you could say...
Sure.
So, and, and Tom might not agree with me on this, based on a couple of your previous statements, but I, I'm gonna have to scrutinize the two brush trucks just a little bit. Because I, I really think that that is not a need, but more so a want. Because obviously, I, I don't wanna speak for you, but knowing the one at Pedler as well, as far as how much it's used versus the replacement. And this kinda falls into play based on the public safety side. I know that's a drop in the bucket compared to what we're gonna need for that, but that's $750,000 that I don't think is a critical need.
Well, okay, so I could agree with you, yet.
But?
No, I'm saying, yet, that's different, okay? Yet, we've worked very hard since I've been on this board to go to a 20-year replacement schedule.
I understand that.
For fire apparatus and quicker than that on our EMS.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and, and...
We wanna get away from that, right? I mean, we can sit there and...
I do not want to get away from that.
No, no, because...
But what we're doing right now is we're ranking. And to me, see, to me, we're doing a first blush, okay? And then when we come back at the next meeting, and this is how it's worked since I've been on the board, and we start talking seriously about how much money we're willing to spend, okay? Then things kinda get reprioritized again, okay? To me, you know, I think typically, we fund it somewhere between 1 and 1.5 million a year in capital needs, right?
1.5 is usually about the max.
That's about where we go. So I think, knowing that, they'll come back with a cut line saying, you know, you're gonna spend 1.5 million or 1 million, and then we'll reprioritize within that again. But I'm just saying, to me, unless there's water blowing in the windows at Monroe at the Parks and Rec building, which I go down there every month, right? And I haven't seen any water blowing through it. Probably should've left the windows that were in it when I went to elementary school there, it'd probably been a lot better. But anyway, I wouldn't place that over a piece of fire apparatus. Is it, has it fell down in the road right now? No, but at some point, it will, so how far do you press it off? That's my point.
You talking about the fire trucks?
Yeah, the fire trucks.
On the brush truck?
And the only thing I'll add before I sit down, as both of you wanna know, the lead time on fire trucks has gotten pretty long, and so we're at least 24 months out.
Oh, you're 48 months.
Yeah, so just know that whatever we approve this July, we're probably looking at July minimally of 26 or, or early 27 to, probably early 27, honestly, to get, so... Yes, sir.
Correct.
Anything else for me, I'm sorry.
So is it the board's consensus to move the windows below the two brush trucks? Or below the, the, the one that's below it?
Why don't you move it, if you wanna move it, move it in front of both of them?
No, I was saying, do you want me to move it down? This is just strictly ranked based on averages.
What are we moving, what, what are we moving down? The Monroe one, where, where are you moving it to?
I was asking, do we wanna put it below the, the Amherst brush truck? Because it ended up above a, by a quarter of a point.
Or you wanna move it above both of them?
I don't wanna move it to the bottom. Two things, two, I'm gonna say two things, one...
Move the windows down.
We learned our lesson about not staying on a replacement program when it comes to large expenditures. We learned our lesson on equipment, and I like what we're doing now that we've got it very methodical or very systematic about it. But we also wanna take care of what we got, to your point. And, you know, is there anything that we can do to those windows that will buy us another year? Can we caulk them, can we do anything?
I have pictures if you wanna see some. We, we can evaluate, we can come back to you. My understanding is, can I get replacement?
They're not gonna be able to hear what you're saying on the, on the YouTube.
Working in that building every day, the safety of my staff comes first. And I've got pictures of where the windows are gapped, you've got window seals where the, they're dry rotting or rotted from the, from the weather, from the water. You're looking at mold issues, you're looking at a major health issue potentially, structural damage to that building. So...
Talking about the windows in the front of the...
All the windows, every window in that building, Tom, yeah, it's, yeah. It's bad. If you, like the meeting room that we meet in for the advisory board, if you can just go over to the window seals and look, it's awful. And a lot of those windows won't even open and close. Yes, I think so, yes. And that's, and I mean, you've got some that are offset with gaps between them, I mean, it's, it's, it's bad. So...
That's, that's fine, I'm not, I'm not saying, see, I think where we're getting hung up is we're saying, okay, we're gonna, this isn't gonna get funded this year. And it may not, but I think what we're doing right now is prioritizing.
Yeah, I, I think it needs to really be addressed, I agree, yes.
Yeah, and nobody's disagreeing with that. If you tell me, Tom, I got my, my staff, it's a safety issue, I got wind blowing in my head.
Well, the money we'll save in electricity, just the heating of that place would be, you know, probably a lot.
I'm just saying, to me, the greater public safety...
Right, I understand.
So then, are you, do we agree we're gonna put it below brush truck 16?
That was my question.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes, guys.
So then we have a learning lane project. I think I'll leave that one for Mr. Bryant to explain, even though I think I understand it, it's probably better he has the history.
Yeah, let me explain this. So um, when the county, when, when the county built, when the counties and the schools built Madison Heights Elementary School, they extended the road to the school. A few years later, Sam Davis buys the property that's behind Madison Heights Elementary School and, and built a subdivision back there. In doing so, he, 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 he plotted the subdivision and he, the county was holding surety for him to build those roads and make them state maintained roads. Okay? Um, when, when Mr. Davis went to have the roads accepted into the state system, he had everything right. He built the roads, he did what he said he was gonna do. He came to VDOT to get them accepted, and VDOT discovered that, and I don't know if it was schools or county, the, the roads from the school back to the two lane road never got taken into the system in the nineties. And so he was held hostage basically, essentially, because he couldn't take his roads in, even though they were built to state standards. He couldn't have his roads behind the school taken into the state system, because state roads have to connect back to a state road. You can't have a gap. So the county went through a process for many years of obtaining right of way, obtaining easement, drainage easements, fixing and repairing slopes, fixing and repairing um culverts. Um, and the county eventually got that road taken to the state system. Um, it's my belief that the residents that live in Beachwood, the state subdivision behind the elementary school, uh, they, they went into that subdivision uh recognizing those roads were gonna be state maintained roads. Um, and so, for lack of a better term, I think it's our duty to right this wrong and to, to do what we can to get these roads now up to par. Because we were, we, at the board's request back in like, I think, two thousand ten or eleven, um, relea- allowed Mr. Davis to release the surety because of the fault that would, took place back in the nineties of not getting the road taken into the system. So this would be to fix this road and have it taken into the state system.
Fixing the piece from the school into the subdivision.
Well, correct. Well, the VDOT punch list, which Melissa includes both roads, cause there's two roads in the subdivision, correct? And I believe that, that quote you received, working with, and we also worked with the school system, because they had an interest in having those roads also taken in, because it could help how cars turn around.
That's because VDOT wouldn't take them originally on a technical count.
Well, VDOT couldn't take them because, right, because, and the state law requires that if you have a state school, you're supposed to have state access. And for years that it, it was not taken in the state system as it should have been.
So it's fifty thousand, huh? Alright.
I'll leave it where it is. So the next few are your, your new public safety station, the first piece, a grounds truck, and the administration building updates. Any of these you wanna move around in the order? Any of them you wanna push out? You have to let, you just say so, um.
I think we need to move the public safety station up, way up. We should find the money to start the discussion. My opinion.
And I don't disagree, but are you saying it needs to be moved out of this order? Because it's gonna get, it's gonna make the cut line.
I think it's two parts to it.
You think what?
I think it's two parts to that, because this is drawn out over three fiscal years. And.
Well, just cause we fund the forty-five now doesn't mean we're technically gonna fund the six million next year, but it.
Well.
The only thing that's adopted.
Is the first year.
Now, for planning purposes, you're absolutely right, but.
But if you start the project, you tend to fund the other years.
Personally, I, I think we.
And I have the six million slated as being financed, because there's just not gonna be money for that.
We should start.
Do you want? Brad?
Alright.
Before we get too far, are you okay with just the forty-five all the way through June of twenty twenty-five?
I'd move the whole project up.
We'll combine the six seventy into the forty-five, cause that's design, isn't it?
So the six seventy is architectural engineering, um, you know, being if we have a piece of property, uh, that was just the A and E cost um associated with that.
That's in the next fiscal year.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and the A and E would, you know.
Your A and E is gonna take you probably at least six to nine months on most of these larger projects like this. That's why I'm asking, is, is it feasible to, to have a need for that before June of twenty twenty-five?
I think that would be the board's pleasure and how the finances will lay out. I mean, I think, um, you know, we, I think we could be prepared for A and E before June of twenty twenty-five, but I think at least, um, I think the important thing, I think you all have identified today is we start the process and uh begin moving forward, cause it is a lengthy process. Um, we will be appreciative at whatever um rate or whatever portion you fund.
There's a lot of whittens attached to this project.
I got, I got, I got some heartburn. Not, I, I want, I wanna do this. My, it's not my commitment. It's that we're allocating funds for something that right now is just still a concept. It would seem to me that we'd wanna say, have a commitment from this board that we're gonna do this thing. And that then, yeah, we're gonna do this thing, and this is where we're gonna do it, right here.
I think that's what the forty-seven thousand issue is. They go out and start talking about how big does it need to be, where should it kind of go, and identify some locations, right? That's what the forty-seven does. And then the next year, they would come back and say, okay. And what we might decide next year is that the need suppressing that we would combine the A and E and, and the construction into a funding package. Right? But I think we need to start having the discussions about where they're going to be at. Because I don't think they're going to continue to live in Monalese Fire Department.
Well, I, I agree with you there, but don't you think that we need to kind of have an idea of where we're going to put this building? And try to secure that. You can't do that forty-five thousand dollars.
Figuring out where to put it.
Yeah, and then getting that land.
No, you're not gonna get the land for it. I think you can start talking about.
Unless we own it.
Well, unless we own it, but I think you start talking about the size of the facility.
I don't think we have, I'm just going, the elephant in the room, I don't think we have three years.
Yeah, I agree with that, too.
We worked on this ten years ago.
So do you wanna leave it where it is, or would you, is there a place in the list above that you would like to see me move this to?
Based on what I'm hearing, I'd move it ahead of the Leach eight pump.
Yeah, the forty-seven.
Yeah.
Before seven?
Forty-five.
I'm saying the forty-seven, yeah.
We're funding the forty-seven.
Well, I'm gonna move the whole project there, sir.
Yeah, that's right. That's right.
Got learning lane?
Oops. Maybe I need to put these glasses on. They're on top of my head.
Claudia's got some pink ones.
Mine are purple.
Pink glasses.
Okay, I've moved it up. I keep rolling, cause uh, I think we're good right now. Don't go too far, cause your UTV is not too far away. Um, so we have the grounds truck, the administration, I'm gonna kind of, these are the last few. The grounds truck, the administration building updates, the UTV for public safety, the burn building addition. Those are the next four. Is there anything on there that needs to be moved?
That's a one.
That's a one. I understand.
Like a side by side.
Sixty thousand dollars? Sixty thousand dollars for one?
That's outfitted and everything, for its intended need.
So he can go around with a siren and lights and all that. Do they really cost that much, Brad?
Is that equipped? I don't know why he's that down.
I think you're all messing with me now. You want me to get some exercise? Um, that includes a side by side. It has a tank and pump on the back that could be used for brush fires. It has a skid unit on it where we could extract patients out of a wooded area off the trails. Um, it also can be converted to carry manpower into a, a large incident. And it also includes a trailer to uh, to put it in, and it has a light. So it's fully outfitted, multipurpose, and it has a trailer. Is the reason it's at that cost.
Okay, now you got me.
Sixty is a whole lot cheaper than that seven fifty.
Are y'all good with those where they are?
Two public safety guys on this board. This is gonna be fun.
So then we have, I think I said that, the burn building, replacing all the county entryway signs, administration paving, and the Sarah Lou Christian Trail expansion. Y'all all want them to stay on the list for the current year, in the places that they're in. Do you have any questions about any of the projects?
I'm gonna throw a curve ball. I would, I would rather see the street sweeper over the county signs. Just after all the complaints we've, we've heard about keeping the streets clean and everything over the past couple of years. That's me personally saying that.
That's, I mean.
But isn't that VDOT's job? Who's gonna operate the street sweeper?
It, it is VDOT's job. Um, we just can't get enough traction for them to come out and do, they'll, they'll do, um, I think Lombardo, Mr. Lombardo, they're doing two sweeps a year. Um, and that's what they're contracted with, and we can only get them to do two street sweeps a year.
So we gonna go out and buy, you can get a street sweeper about as cheap as you can get a UTV?
I think that's used.
Gonna use the UTV as a street sweeper.
Might be mounted on a UTV.
I thought so. I was like, I'm pretty sure that's not a new one.
Now, actually, um.
All right, you got, you get the UTV, but you gotta hold a broom.
You got a street sweeper sweeping street street. Yeah, you gotta hold a broom.
Now, we had actually pushed that out, Stacy, to the twenty-five, twenty-six, correct?
Yes, the street sweeper.
So that actually wasn't on this list to prioritize.
No, it wasn't.
I mean, we can, we can put, we can put it on there if you wanna put it on the list.
It needs to be a.
Over, over the county signs, I mean.
I'm assuming this is just for the south end, correct? Around the Jersey area and up through the.
That, that's the intent, was the Madison Heights corridor, but certainly if it was needed for any county purpose.
Is VDOT gonna let you do?
Yeah, we'd have a, we have a permit with them now.
I'll be, I'll be the, the devil's advocate a little bit for Mr. Thacker in that he's having trouble getting sign companies to come out and maintain those entryway signs. So what he wants to do, and just so you know, is to change them to metal signs that don't have to be painted every other year.
And we were gonna debate, we'll bring it to you, but we'll debate which logo you would choose to use. So there's been some debate on let's use the new branding for our entryway signs or continue with the county seal. Don't need to make that decision today. We wanna, we just wanna update the signs. The signs in some places where the sun hits them are very faded, they're falling apart. So we wanted to put them on as a priority. We'll come back to you for a discussion on whether or not, which branding or logo you would like to.
I'd be surprised if you could replace me for that amount of money.
I think he's already gotten the prices for it, but I, I, what I, I just, in case you all get complaints about the state of those signs, he's, is, my understanding is struggling to get sign companies to come out and refresh them.
Does this include the community signs like Lowe'sville and Clifford and all them?
Not the new ones we just put in. It, it would just be the gateway signs coming in.
How many is the total, Jeremy?
I think it's nine.
Thought it was seven.
Nine total gateways?
Nine, nine or ten signs?
Nine.
Yeah, cause you're, you've, you gotta remember like Route one sixty-three, Route two ten, twenty-nine business, um.
Plus your one thirties and your.
One thirty, sixty, one fifty-one on each end.
So, Jerry, you wanna move the street sweeper up?
I mean, me personally, based on complaints, I haven't heard any complaints about the streets.
So you would move it up in front of the UTV?
You gotta change years first, cause it's not even on this year.
Well, we'd have to bring it up.
Yeah, we'll have to move it over.
Obviously, if we move it up, we're moving years, right? Where would you move it, Mr. Wade?
Uh, ahead of the county signs. We'll just throw it there for the time being.
Alright, I'll support you on that. Keeps the county clean. Who's gonna operate it? Jeremy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna retire this year.
Which, pick one.
Pick one.
I'm retiring this year. I'll do the street sweeper.
Not, not to get too deep into that though, but us sweeping streets, it's more to that than just us going out and getting in a truck and sweeping streets, cause the new traffic.
Right, we have to comply with all VDOT's regulations, so. It does require sometimes.
This could end up being a expensive.
But our staff has been trained in that.
Yeah, they have been, and um.
Trained in what?
Traffic.
Traffic safety.
Yeah, they've all, they've taken the VDOT classes.
But do we have the equipment to block traffic?
You know, we, we.
Like the.
What, what we end up doing a lot of times um is coordinating with the sheriff's department and have, have a sheriff's deputy out there with the blue lights on to help us in those cases. Mr. Lombardo, anything you would like to add to that? Yeah. Mrs. McBride, did you get the ordering?
I think so, unless there's anything anybody wants to change, other than we added a street sweeper, which leaves everything on the list.
I, the street sweeper, aren't there companies you can hire that will do that for you? I thought that I saw in Lindberg.
We, we didn't, Mr. Lombardo, did we look at that option? Certainly something we could explore before next, before we bring this back up.
I'm not opposed to sweep the street. Don't get me wrong. If it's cheaper, by getting somebody else to do it.
Have you hired our trash person yet?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they've been on.
Yeah, they're out there. They're out there today picking up a Route two ten.
Yeah, I'm looking into that.
Okay, yeah.
I'm good, as long as everyone else is good with what we have on the, on the list. Well, so this piece again is completely separate from your operating budget.
I understand.
And, and I'll, I'm gonna say, okay, you're gonna spend this much of your general fund, and this is what you'll have left. It's, it's one time money. We don't pay for any of this out of your operating budget. We don't address it with the operating budget. Now, we do have some supplemental projects to weigh in, but we usually do a portion of those as well. And we'll talk about those at the next meeting. And I will try to get those out to you in the next couple of days. I know the schedule's set today, but I have not gotten to those. I had no internet all day yesterday at my house. Thank you, Xfinity.
I'm assuming you're gonna come back with a cut line somewhere at one and a half million.
I'll show you what, where that lands, and you all can decide what you are comfortable with.
Okay.
Alright. Sounds good. Board, anything else? Alright, yes, go ahead.
I just wanna thank our, our staff. Our staff spends a lot of time trying to get this right, and um, they spend a lot of extra time talking amongst themselves and each other, and um, they put a lot of effort in this. So thank you guys for being here. Thanks for the work on trying to make it right, and thank you, Board, for helping us work through this and prioritize it with us.
Appreciate it.
One question. The one thing that, that I didn't see anywhere on here, unless I missed it at the bottom perhaps, was Mill Creek Lake, um, that's not on there, Mill Creek Lake Picnic Grounds. Remember that whole conversation we had last year? Huh?
The campground?
Yeah.
We, the campground, we took the camp, we, 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 we took the campground off based on the feedback we received from.
So, no campground?
With not on, we don't have a plan based on how things, how we understood things went. Now, it's your pleasure. We can put it back on. But we, we did take it off. Now, we have a committee, a Mill Creek Lake Committee, where we are doing lots of improvements, aren't we, Mr. Nixon? To Mill Creek Lake, and so we will continue, you'll continue to see more and more projects that.
Tom, but that was gonna be a discussion on that big overall reaching.
The master plan?
Yeah.
I would think it would be a part of it.
Yeah, maybe that's where it's supposed to be.
Yes, I mean, if it comes back and the master plan is a recommendation, and we adopt the plan with a recommendation, that would bounce that determined, put a campground up there, then I think it would show up in future CIPs. But right now, until we get that plan done, I don't, I think it's wise not to have it on there.
Thank y'all. Uh, with that, anything else, Board? Alright, we'll adjourn. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.